I'll call the order the special city council meeting. For roll call, we're adding a new letter E. Quote for a half ton Chevy and then quote for a concrete bid to install benches will be bumped down to F. Roll call.
Michelle Adams.
Kirby Lamb.
Sam Solar.
David Paradise.
Justin Manuel.
Dan Weaver.
Alright, on to business. We'll be conducting interviews for the city council member vacancy and the first person is Roy Henry. Thanks for coming, Roy.
Glad to be here.
Before we ask you any questions, is there anything that you want to say at a time or?
No, not really. I talked to the guy from Baxter on Highway 12 for about two hours what should be done out there, everything. We had good conversation for quite a while and there's a lot of things that he's in good interest with. Glad that I told him and everything. He was quite a guy to talk to.
Why do you want to be on the city council again?
There's a few things that I never got accomplished while I never got reelected and there's a few things that I'd like to get done. Michelle, some of the things that we did at one time that I'd like to see redone and checked into. Like with the trailer park and stuff like that with the ditch down there and stuff like that. You know, we got permission, we can go in that trailer park anytime we want because we supply city sewer and water down there and everything. And with that ditch never gets cleaned out all the time which should be done. And the fence should be put up by that storage thing over there that was proposed a long time ago. The mattresses and stuff were ending up in that brick down there and everything. Because that guy that owns that storage thing, he owned part of the property on the other side too yet. And they ain't maintaining what they should be done. And there's a few other things that I'd like to get the state involved with a few pieces of property around town here, but I'm not mentioning nothing right now. What that property is. And I like working with people. I ain't got a problem with that. When I was mayor and stuff like that, I went out on Sundays and people had problems. And everything I went and looked with and took my planning and zoning book with and everything and showed them the high laws and everything and everything. There are no problems. I got people that still thank me for coming to their house and showing them the stuff in the books and everything.
What areas you think the city of Montrose can improve?
Pardon?
What areas do you think the city of Montrose can improve in?
Needs to be improved in? Well, down that way a little bit on Highway 12. Well, when I know when I do Highway 12, they're gonna redo that highway out there for the raptor outfit to come in and out of there. Because I checked when the guy was president that down there for another outfit that was in there. They have stoplights put in from Baxter and stuff like that. The guy was down there improving for the traffic lights and everything. And then there's a few spots out south of town here that could be improved a little bit. Like they were gonna put that one apartment building in out there for senior citizens and stuff like that. And that sort of fell through when I was on planning and zoning. Because I requested the thing for seniors, a basement and stuff like that for tornado light and all that stuff out there. And some of that grass should be cut. East on Highway 12, there's a few spots out there that could be improved.
If you got a $1 million grant for the city and you could do anything with it, what would you do?
Work on our sewer system. Get that back up and running right the way it should be running. So everybody can be working together like with Waverly and stuff like that. The people from Waverly, when that was done that time, I knew Charlie Bush real well, had a good time. And I never got a chance to talk to him to see what was going on. And they never had a meeting with all the people. They tell the people that you got city sewer, the Montrose, you ain't buying water from us. And they robbed Peter to pay Paul. And at that time, back in 65, my brother was maintenance man out there. They had a sewer pump and all that stuff out there and I was out there when he was running that. But Waverly never looked into nothing to get there as updates for anything and got hooked up. And I don't see people, I like to see people having a meeting where everybody can be told what's going on. The same way with our sewer plant down there with the ray lights and all that stuff. To let them know what is going on, what our sewer and how this works for your sewer system to get rid of your bacteria.
As a council member, what is your idea of good leadership?
Pardon?
As a council member, what is your idea of good leadership with the council?
Work with everybody so things can get accomplished. Is what I'd like to see.
If you were to get on with the council, what do you think are your top three traits that you would bring to the table?
Pardon?
What are the top three traits that you would bring to the council if you were?
Well, I know road maintenance and stuff like that. And what class five and stuff should be put down for roads and what tar should be put down for roads. Because over on Mendy Lane over there, the city got ripped off. And when they done that over there, we spent about how many thousands of dollars, but they raised the road too high. And they wouldn't listen to what I had to say at the time because I wasn't the mayor and everything. And then they go and put the tar down and everybody's got water in their driveways. Well, your mother knows that over there. And we had our city engineer. I got everybody together. We had a meeting. So run the water around the backside of your garage down to your walking path and stuff like that. I says, Danny, what I'm asking you, I said, you're lying to people. I says, they were either drunk on a Monday or being ready to go home on a Friday and nobody in the yard read the transit to see what was going on. I says, it wasn't fair to us and the taxpayers in town. The way it got ripped up on Mendy Lane over there. I said, everybody's driveway should have been treated the same as what should have been done. And then all you got is all these people coming back at you and how many people you got over there with the driveway spud now. Then they gotta have their driveways tarred and raise their property up for the water going into their garage. And I know if you work fair with people, a guy won't have no problem. Let's talk to people.
If you could change anything in regards to the city zoning code or city ordinances, what would that be?
Oh, change ordinances. You ain't pretty much on ordinances right now because we've got so many ordinances right now in the book. And some people don't believe half of what you're trying to tell them until you bring the book out and prove it to them. What's going on in the city.
So with the code enforcement and city ordinances, how do you feel about like people's properties?
Well, it's like I was with Michelle that time when I was on planning and zoning and stuff. And people wanted to put a fence right on the property line. You can't put a fence right on the property line because you can't get on the backside to cut the grass. On that people's property, you'd be going over on somebody else's property and you got somebody coming on all the nights all the time. I think you had that opportunity to improve a river with that fence.
That fence, that's how we can change now?
Yeah.
People can do that now?
Yeah. This is what I'm saying. See, there was no cooperation rubber wise to see what the fences. And I says, you gotta have that lightened up like you could have a 20 inch lawnmower to go on that backside to cut the weed with alongside the fences that you're gonna have. So you ain't got somebody coming over there saying, get off my property you're on there. Then they call the cops on you. That ain't the way the system should work.
What do you think is the most compelling issue facing the city?
Right now, tax base. That's what we got. When everybody's taxes went, the flu, we didn't nobody knew nothing about it. We had a tax base, but then all of a sudden everybody's taxes went up. And why didn't the county have a meeting or explain to people why these taxes are going up? Right now, they already got the tax base set for 2024. That's a 54.1 million. And they say they ain't gonna do nothing with it. That's the same way with the school issue over there with the school. Sure, we need schools and stuff like that for our kids and everything. But why tell people what the problem is and why you need all of this? Why does that Buffalo school need that whole front reefer again? You know? For 51 million or whatever you're gonna spend on that. I can't see that part. And then they say the taxes ain't gonna go up again. Well, if they're gonna do that, I'd like to see that in grant money. Or get started to see what's going on so people ain't bothering all the time and talking about taxes. We pay enough right now where our taxes, have the businesses and stuff that we got in town here for the taxes or everything, you know? You gotta try and talk to people and explain things. Well, when there was no meeting. Well, when we had a taxation meeting, guys from Buffalo come over, we sat at the community center out there. I started asking questions. They said, where you going with all these stuff? Well, your county commissioners in back ends, you give me an answer. People want to know, you know? Because I've been around too many people and like, I ain't bragging or nothing, but Hubert Humphrey. My dad dug his basement and I was caretaker for a year for Hubert out there. And Hubert says, if you ever gonna lie to people, you'll never have friends. And that's my motive of it. And we got along great. When he was running for president and stuff, I was deputized to take the student newspaper buses off to his place around the lake where he lives and stuff. I got along great. And you can't lie. Treat people fair and you won't have a lot of problems.
So you're aware that the council, this is a simple question.
Pardon?
You know that the council meets every second, fourth, Monday, correct? At seven? You don't have a conflict with any of that?
No. Well, like I say, Michelle, you know yourself, I like meeting with people, talking with people. Well, you were on the council, I was in there and stuff. We've done a lot of things together to get things done.
Yeah.
And the county over here on a lot of things that they say couldn't be done. That's just like our old office that we have here. Well, you can't go down to trailer park, you can't do this, you can't do that. Well, then Mr. Tim was from Buffalo over there. He says to me, he says, Roy, finally got somebody that's got a backbone. And I know Danny's got a copy of it with the office that I gave to Sean about the trailer park though.
Is there any or what would you change about our downtown slash main street area?
Nothing really. I think everything's going pretty smooth with everything and that people are starting to work together where there's no bickering going on and stuff. Like it used to be a lot of bickering going on in the hall, city hall up there and stuff, but everything is pretty well mild road. That's just like, I ain't bragging Kirby, but it's just like Waverly when we had, I had the books out of the town there. We had two councilmen and the mayor using grant money to target driveways, go to Canterbury Downs and all that. And the banker, I says, where's that money going? I says, you haven't know where that grant money going. Because that's supposed to been for playgrounds for kids and stuff. And he says, I want to know what he's feeling. I says, you related to one of them, so tell me. That's how I got to know Arnie Carlson when it was our state however and everything.
So the city struggles with getting volunteers in on participation in the community events, events. How would you suggest that we get, you know, more people to participate?
Well, maybe I'd get to find something out, have meetings and see if people can come to these meetings and ask if they'd be interesting. And working with these people who are volunteering to help do things. I know there's a lot of different things like Waverly up there now. They got a committee that works together and everything like with your region and all that stuff up there too, you know? All the body works together and all that stuff.
There's a lot of people in town that say we have problems with our drinking water. What would you do to either fix that or put those thoughts to bed?
I'd have a meeting, a town hall meeting and explain to people with the drinking water what is going on. And if you got a water softener and that stuff, that would take care of quite a bit of it.
One of the things you said when you, why you're seeking the appointment is to get business in the town. How do you, how do you propose going about getting more business in the, in the Montrose?
Getting what?
Getting more business in the Montrose.
More businesses? Well, we lost businesses that we should have never lost. And when I was mayor and stuff like that, I was never informed about these businesses that wanted to be in town, that left town. They went to Waverly. And that one business that I won't be able to place that was over here where the Volkswagen places now. Well, I went to the post office, I knew the postmaster up there and I talked to him. And he says, you know, we do $50,000 a month with that automobile place. And when we had our planning committee here, they had one whatever and it was hired by the city. I brought that up and she looked at me and she says, what? You gotta be kidding. I says, no, $50,000 a year. I says, look at what Waverly's got now. Waverly's got three times that much. And look at the back tax base they're giving them with the post office is doing and businesses coming in. That's just like that one piece of property out here. Well, there's a new building going in out there now with these twin homes and stuff. I tried proposing to get a deal like Howard Lake out there, a dollar per lot for business. And I says, once you got one business in there, you're gonna get more and more and more. Look at Howard Lake how it come up. And look what they got up there in that industrial park now. It's really huge. You know? And I tried wanting to do that out here, but some people just wouldn't listen to what I had to say. And I think it was a shame, you know, really, because I'd like to see a business going out there where that paint places now, where Carl's is out there, you know? And we'd go to get a business like that at a dollar per lot, you know, they maintain that lot and landscape it and water and everything. And once you get one of them going, you know, get one building like they. These twin homes now are gonna go going in out there. I think they're beautiful. They're really nice houses. And I think what really happened once that gets going, Chelsa will be building this twin home on my corner out there that he's got the company bought.
So one of the big topics here in town is chickens. What is your idea of people having chickens?
Just a toss up, just a toss up. You don't know which way to go with something like that. Because some people have rabbits and maybe kittens and kids and everything. You don't know which way, what they're going in, which way to go with anybody on this chicken business. If something like that, but if people end up with rats and stuff on some people's yards and stuff like that, I can see where there'd be a problem. But if people were divided by the law and stuff like that, I don't see where there'd be that much of a problem. Because across from me where Justin Emery is now, the guy was gonna start this ethanol place over there. That's back 70 years ago. Well, rats were running all over the place with the corn and everything coming in your yard and the whole ball of that. But if you don't keep your stuff locked up, you're gonna have that problem. And you're gonna have people coming to the council and complaining, oh, you let them do this, you let them do that. This is where something's gotta be put down in writing and stated. You got any problems, you're gonna have to do away with your chickens or whatever you have. So we don't got all these violations. And you know, that's just like somebody picking on somebody with buildings or picking on somebody building this or somebody picking on your building this. Well, can't you work with that person and see what the problem is? And if they ain't got the money, see how they're gonna go about proceeding to do this so we ain't arguing with them all the time. I mean, I have someone coming up here in the city hall all the time from the workers in city hall.
How do you feel about the available transportation in Montrose for like, you know, busing and that type? And what would you do to fix that if you see a problem?
Well, Trailblazers come over here quite a bit. They pick up a lot of them over there at Rose Haven and stuff like that. A few different places they pick up. The Trailblazer and stuff like that.
Do you think that's good enough, just the Trailblazer?
Well, that's the only thing they're gonna get Kirby to come in and something like that with the, what they charge. Because right now, other places you charge a taxi, it's $2 a mile, $3 a mile. And you get this Trailblazer coming in, you ain't got that kind of expense. And they go out there as far as I know, because I know a couple of people that have ridden, excuse me, drive farm and stuff, you know? And they have no complaints with none of that. And like Charlie Farrell told me, it's a great outfit to have, you know, to come in and do stuff.
Please complete this sentence. A Montrose city council member should be. Please complete this sentence. A Montrose city council member should be.
Should be honest and fair and treat people fair and understand what people got to say. And if they got a problem, see what the problem is and try and get it fixed.
I got one more. Just with the limited amount of time left on this appointment, what would you like to see accomplished in with this role with the council?
See, everybody work together and get more things, try and get more businesses in town, try and put promotion out for something on some property that we got. And see if we can get businesses to come in. That's like that piece of property down here where Louis Ranker lived and stuff like that. I don't know why. Who owns it or what that guy, how much he wants for that piece of property or nothing. But I know at one time somebody wanted to put a subway and everything in there and everything and they had everything all planned out, all the papers were drawn up and everything. But the city part wouldn't work with whoever wanted to do this and that guy that owned the property didn't want to work with the guy that done this, so they just forget it. That's the same way that it happened out there at XL Energy on that industrial park out there. A pizza place wanted to go in out there and stuff like that. But it's just like whoever we had hired for this kind of stuff, the council never got to know nothing about any of this stuff. Which I got really mad at the time when I got found out as mayor, when I don't know what was going on. I wasn't a happy camper. I says, we tried to raise the town, make it nice town and everything. And if we could turn around and find this out, no. It don't work. You don't see Waverly with this kind of problem anymore when I'm in a couple of their meetings and I know them up there. Same way with Howard Lake when I've been in a couple of their meetings. Everybody works together and the planning and zoning, people come in and they explain what they got. But right now, we got great planning and zoning as far as I'm concerned. Everything gets explained and what's going on and building wise and everything, you know, what's what. And I think it's great.
I guess we don't have any other questions for you. Is anything just kind of closing that you want to add or say that maybe we didn't cover?
Like I say, Kirby, I love working with people. I got a problem with that. And that's just like with my blue lights hanging on my house, I have a lot of red lights hanging on my house. The red lights are for people with cancer and stuff. My blue lights are for victims with the police, they killed in action, they're killed on duty and stuff like that. That's why I got them lights on and everything. And people say, why? I say, I look out for that because I got three brothers out in the service and mom and two brother in law. They done a job for the country, you know? And that's what I look out for. And the wife belongs to, she's the president of the jury, UDF. And I attend all their meetings and everything. Got no problem with none of that. And I like working with people. Like I said, I don't argue with people. If you got a problem, go see what the problem is. Take the book with you and so are the Roman, black and white. So they ain't up here harassing city hall. Otherwise, I appreciate this and I appreciate talking to you all. I like talking to Danny, shoot debris bugs in the oil.
Figuring out the world's problems, Roy.
I like with this sewer thing, I hope the city goes along with it with Waverly and stuff. And everybody works together and not connected up all. I say for people a lot of money. And like I said, I explain to people and show them all that sewer plant works with that ultraviolet and everything, what it does for bacteria and all that stuff. Have a movie of it and invite people to come and look and see what it does and where your tax dollars is being spent. I appreciate it. Nice talking to yous.
Thanks, Roy.
Thanks, Roy.
Take care.
Maybe. See you later. Have a good night. Toby? Question, wanted to take a quick break. Before we ask any questions, is there anything you just want to say off the bat introductory or?
Well, I mean, as the council's aware, I am currently the chairperson for parking wreck. What would like to say about this weekend? I got plenty of sun and everybody have a problem very happy. We're gonna make that tomorrow. But no, I am, I'm excited to be here, speak with you guys. I feel like there is a lot that can be done. I'd like to be part of a solution rather than increase into. Not really a problem, but like I said in my application, I feel like this is more like a town rather than a community. And I'd like to see it towards a community. By that, I mean everybody. I honestly agree with everything everybody says. But we all have to live here. And whatever we can do to improve this place, I'm more than willing to listen and learn and try to help.
I guess that kind of answers for your question, my question of why you want to be on the city council. We're gonna start off with the chickens. How do you feel about chickens?
I heard that question earlier and I'll be, I'll be, I'll say the same thing I say to anybody that asks me in town. Because I actually amazingly often ask this question in multiple locations in this town. If you look at the city's multiple Facebook pages, both censored and uncensored. Let's see, number one thing I see on there is moose dog. Number two is somebody's cat that got hit by a car. Or somebody's kids are out of control. And I'm not against chickens by any means, if it's done properly. But I feel like the number one problem with having chickens is that people are already not following the rules with their cats and dogs. Why would they follow the chickens? And I understand we could sell permits, but that permit money would not even pay for the employees who are required to enforce these rules. So I am against chickens and that's the only reason, because I don't trust that people can prove that they can keep it clean enough. All my neighbors don't see it the same way, but we're not in the streets fighting over it. Because if chickens happen, they happen. I understand we are not in the city where I grew up. They have chickens in the city where I grew up actually, even though it's the city. They have chickens in the city where I grew up actually, even though it's the city. So if it happens, it happens. I'm not for it, but uh, I obviously can't, one person, one opinion. If the majority of people want it, then actually show up and ask for it. You have to listen.
Outside of chickens, what do you think are the three biggest issues facing Montrose today and in the future?
Uh, I think the biggest issue currently is the water situation. The reason I say that is, is I'd like to see a, a way to deal with our magnesium problem that does not bankrupt the city or put undue stress on people that are already upset about paying pretty high dollar for water currently. I've felt the same way. I'm sure that at some point, because the state does do a lot of programs, if you get with the right people, they will probably pay the majority of it for the whole state. Granted, we'll still get more taxes. That's just the way we do it in the state. I was actually gonna have a conversation with my former boss who is, he works in the legislature now. That's where he left and went to. Uh, he has a lot to do with getting things into the legislature and discussed at that level. I didn't get a chance to talk to him before this meeting, but I'd like to see it be a multi, like not just a city or a county. It needs to be handled on all three levels. Because a city alone, that's gonna bankrupt people. It's gotta be fiscally responsible. I don't wanna spend everybody's money so we can all tax, we can do rough stuff, that's nobody wants to live here anyways. So I guess that was one problem, but it's a big one for me. But I will say we do need more business. More business, more rooftops, more tax base. That helps fund everyone.
From the outside looking in, in fact, about getting more business, what do you think you can bring to the table or what do you think needs to be brought to the table to attract said business to the town of Montreal?
Uh, well, I mean, I did see a lot of business now since Delano where I was driving by. But I looked into why they were getting businesses over by the pet food place or pet tree company. They're handing out tax breaks. Getting them in the door is the key to long-term tax base. You may have to give up a lot in the beginning in order to get it in the future. It's not an overnight fix. It's the same thing with building houses. Right now, nobody's, nobody wants to buy a house when the interest rates are so high. And I've seen that in meetings you guys have had where the builders are like, can we get another year? Because nobody wants to build the house. They don't wanna put out the construction costs. They're not gonna give them back right now. Um, you gotta get flexible with things. I still to this day do not understand why we really have so much more business than we do. I mean, I've been coming out the way really, I know, I've only lived here four years. I've been coming out the way really for over twenty. And I don't, they didn't used to have all that business. So I don't know what we need to open up on twelve or what's available on twelve, cause that's where the businesses are gonna want to be. That, County Twelve, and so that property, your house from you sells, that has been a cornfield for four years with the for sale sign on it. Between that and Jackie B's not ever being opened, I don't know where you cook our business.
If you get on the council, what is your suggestion for the commissions that are gonna be short? With volunteers and members?
Uh, it'd be the same thing that we suggested after you left, um, after Dwayne unfortunately passed. Uh, we have to go out and get more people.
How do you suggest doing that?
Uh, everybody talk to your friends, people that you wanna see and work with. I mean, there's plenty of people that will give to this community. I didn't used to see it, but I can tell you that after these, this last month of working on getting that done this last weekend and even the day of, people are more than willing to help. It's, it's all about approach. It's having a face-to-face conversation. Sending emails doesn't work. Uh, sending letters doesn't seem to work. When I went out and I was told the exact same thing from Justin Emery when I got, when I got his trailer. He said, if you'd send me an email or just called me, I'd just ignore you. He goes, that's all I do business face-to-face and it goes a long ways. I had to get a little crow to fire department. I have no problem with that. You know, I'm gonna make missteps. There's no doubt about it. I have no problem with owning my mistakes. And if you come in humble and honest with people, it goes a long ways.
Uh, do you have any time commitments that would allow, that would make it so you can't make uh, the council meetings at seven o'clock and/or when we have these workshops at five thirty, six o'clock?
Uh, no, I currently do work in the city. My boss is very flexible and I work Monday through Friday till four thirty. I'm not, I'm on salary, so when work needs to be done, I stay late. But I can always push stuff, so it's never an issue for me to get back to something I need to be at. My kid goes play hockey, which is very time consuming, but I also have a spouse who's more than willing to support me and take him for those.
Do you also play ball?
I do. I play ball one night a week now. It used to be three. I've gotten old. And uh, I, if, if I play ball, it's on Thursdays and that's only really if I decide I really should go play ball. If there was a meeting, I just wouldn't play ball. One of the guys I play ball with is the, he was the, was the county commissioner or human services commissioner out in the cloud.
What do you think the three greatest strengths are in the city?
The city? Um, I really like the small town. Um, I really think that done properly, there's a lot of people that care. So I think you do have the people that will support things. Uh, which I, I think is huge, cause you need to have the buy-in and the support of everybody in the community. Otherwise, it's just a town. You can go live anywhere. If people don't care, what's the difference then? What is anybody trying to work on? Uh, there is a good, a good base, I feel. Uh, the way it's laid out is not perfect, but there is some business to build on. We have the elementary school right over here. We have a lot of parks. I can tell you from being on Parking Right, probably more than we need. And there's people that wanna move out this way. There's a lot of people that wanna move out of where they're at. And this town offers a lot of what people are looking for. Cause I can tell you that's a lot of what I looked for four years ago.
So the city council sometimes has to make some tough decisions. And with that, if the decision was in the best interest of the city, but it's, if it's something that you're not interested in, how do you go about? Do you kinda go with your own personal or do you go with what's in the best interest of the city?
Well, so you have to look in the best interest of the city. It may not align with my values. It's kinda like, and I'll bring this, bring this one example up. I saw you guys struggle with it and I afterwards had the same struggle. One person, um, was asking for a reduction in their water bill because of the street, the street workers. And you can tell they're on a fixed income. They're gonna struggle. That sucks. And it was a tough decision for you guys to make, but you do have to realize you're setting precedents. And so you may have to say no, even though in your heart you wanna give it to them and be like, you know what, it's a hundred bucks. Well, it's a hundred bucks now for three thousand people or fifteen hundred households. Well, all of a sudden, that's fifteen thousand dollars for whatever it is, fifteen thousand. That's a lot. So you have to make those tough choices. And try to, you try to be fair and impartial, but we are all human. We, I mean, there's deals that have been made in the past that definitely don't make sense now in the future. And somebody had to make that tough choice at one point.
Uh, if anything, what would you change about our downtown slash main street area?
Not a lot of room. But uh, I'd like to see a little more business. I guess I, and how you do that, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. More than one, try to learn, try to help anywhere I can. Uh, there does seem to be room, especially on twelve for more business. In town downtown, I mean, you guys just did a street project. Looks, looks pretty nice. Uh, I really like the community center area. I think it's, it needs to be focused on a little more as far as uh, having more things there. Cause I don't think there's enough being done over there. But uh, we're trying to improve some parts. Make some changes, you know, roll some money. We've talked about the ball field and different things like that. I think if you get the right people together, you can all make it happen. We need to bring in more people. Not too many though. Rest of the small town.
Uh, please complete the sentence. Uh, a Montrose City Council member should be.
Uh, Roy hit a lot of it. They shouldn't be impartial. They should be fair. They need to show some empathy, cause people are struggling at times. Uh, but you gotta be able to work with everybody across the board. If you simply can't work with somebody, it's gonna cause a problem, no matter what department it is. If for some reason Danny and I don't get along and I'm not gonna talk to Danny, well now, that's communication cut off. And that's on me if I, it's my fault. If it's not, we need to just work it out. Uh, I've had problems with people where I didn't see eye to eye with them at jobs I've had. You find a way to work together, because it's in the best interest of the city. So you gotta be, you just gotta be, you come in open, honest and open to listening. You gotta listen. That's probably one of the bigger ones.
Uh, if you could change any of the city code or city ordinances, what would you change?
I don't know of any that I would necessarily change. I mean, I know there's, you know, I know some of the ones that bother dogs. I guess I wouldn't change the one for chickens by any means, um, but that's my opinion. I have to be open to the discussion. People came and asked for it. I don't know if it's, the one that bothers me the most is the fact that the only gas station in town's a basis. I don't know if that's an ordinance or if it's any other thing that would make that one go on my mind since I moved here. Just because unfortunately, I think there could be other options that would be. But as far as ordinances and that, I don't think you need more ordinances necessarily.
So when it comes to cold enforcement, along with that, how do you feel about like your neighbors? You know, if you were to get a complaint, say your neighbor's grass is too long or there was garbage in their yard. How do you feel about that, with cold enforcement?
Um, well, I have had personally and it's because it was the end of winter and I thought it was gonna be warm enough. I did get a sidewalk complaint one time and I went out and took care of it. Was I happy with it? No. I actually made a comment to my wife that I should send one to the city for the uh, whole pathway that runs down County Twelve. It was never plowed at all winter, but I still went and took care of it. I've had, I've had to deal with neighbors that have had mown grass. Guess what? I ended up mowing it, because they were running on a rough time in their court. I was doing three people's driveways at one time, including my neighbor that um, unfortunately committed suicide across the street. His parents are eighty years old. Keeps his driveway clear, make it look like somebody lives there. The other neighbor, her snowmobile were broken. So I was doing not only the whole block sidewalk, but I was doing like three to five neighbors every time it snowed. So you just work together. I mean, if somebody doesn't like something, I'd hope they would come talk to me. If they go to the city, they go to the city. I'm not gonna know who it is, that's fine. Like I said, I got one complaint in the four years I've been here. I'll probably get one. If I'm out of town or something and it snows. What do you do? You know, take it personally, that's for sure.
How come you didn't run for council last election?
Uh, I believe that was above the time I first got even involved in city government at all. There was a discussion. And that's actually why I ended up applying. Uh, my wife brought it up to me. She said, you know, you talked about it a couple of years ago. And I said, yeah. I said, well, half joking, I, I, I said, well, you know, I gotta do, I gotta do Parking Right first. And then I can do city council, then I can do mayor and governor in about twenty-two years. Uh, so like she told me, and she goes, well, if you do wanna do city council, it's the perfect time to get your feet wet, decide if you really like it or not, before you have to run again in eight to ten months. More or less, but uh, so I really, I originally didn't wanna run. I was looking further down the road, two years, four years. Collect a lot under Dwayne and then moving up into chairperson of Parking Right. And figure out if you can do more.
What about being on city council is most important to you?
Uh, I don't think it's gonna be the notoriety, to be honest. Being in on making the decisions that are gonna make a difference. I mean, sure, we can make all the decisions we want in the parks. End of the day, we still answer to, to city council. I'd like to make a bigger difference in this community. I, I have no problem with the fact of what we're doing at Parking Right level. I've discussed this at different points with people that, you know what, I think we do have a good group. And it could stay this way, but I don't think that would be fulfillable. And I think I can make a bigger difference.
When it comes to being a fiscally responsible, with the last press meeting, you talked about increasing the park budget.
Correct.
Back to eight thousand dollars from the four thousand that it's currently at. How do you perceive that as being like fiscally responsible?
Well, so that would be, that would be to offer more within the city. Like such as the events we have talked about. I mean, we have talked about it on Saturday. Um, at the event that we wanted to host some like bingo nights, uh, some other things for seniors. Uh, get more things out in the parks for the kids. I think when I'm, when I'm talking more fiscally responsible, yes, we did spend some donated money and very little money overall, um, of ours out of the park budget for this event that we ended up doing. We only had time to do one, as it turned out. Uh, but I would, I would go back to when the first thing, brand new committee members, we were told, hey, we need to vote on this pavilion for eight hundred thousand dollars. Cause we got this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. I, I flat out told everybody out in the committee, I said, there's no way I can go for this. It's not responsible. To spend five hundred and fifty thousand dollars just cause we're saving two hundred and fifty thousand. I'd love to put in a thirteen million dollar park over here. It'd be great. It'd be amazing, but it's not fiscally responsible. So let's reallocate our resources, see what we can make better, cause for the people that live here right now, it needs to be better.
Uh, since you're on the topic of money, uh, if you received a million dollar grant for the city to do anything you wanna go do?
Well, I don't think we're gonna fix the magnesium problem for a million dollars. We might get something fixed out of it though. I don't know. Um, I'd like to use that money to bring in more business. Because while it's seed money, right? There are things that need to be fixed. But if I invest it in the city to get more business into the city and more rooftops, more tax base, it's gonna pay off more than that million no longer. Anything in particular? I mean, buy that pavilion still. But no, I would not suggest it. I would, I would definitely invest more into, um, there's a, there's a lot of infrastructure work. I hear about it every meeting. There's stuff that needs to be done to, you know, get things long-term fixed rather than short-term. I've heard it said in the guys meeting. I've heard it said, you guys have been before, you know, only put a Band-Aid on something so long, before that Band-Aid costs more than the actual fix. And so, if you can get the actual final fixes on a bunch of things for a million dollars, that's what I would do. Rather than Band-Aids. But I don't have any suggestions on fencing, I agree to keep mattresses out of there and anything like that, because. In all honesty, if the person owns the property on both sides, they should just pay for the fence themselves and be held responsible for the damage.
Well, let's see, part of the, uh, part of the job beyond the city council is working with city staff. Um, if you came across an issue with city staff, how would you go about handling that?
Can you be a little more specific on what the issue might be?
Let's just say, you know, city staff didn't do something that you liked.
I mean, if it's, if it's something that they weren't supposed to, um, that's one thing, I mean, if it's something that I didn't like, just because I don't like it, that's a completely different, that's not my business, in all honesty. Um, but you gotta have a conversation, you can't just go yell at a person. I mean, I'm not, if, if I have an issue with Jess or anybody else, I'm gonna go talk to that person reasonably. Rather than I'm going to your boss and I'm gonna rat, rat you out behind your back or something like that, you know, that's just silly, I'm playing, I'm playing high school games, in fact, as an adult now. I don't need gossip games.
So, I'm gonna go off, we'll go back on that, the city, in the last couple of years has had some turnovers, some stresses with staff and, and just more. How would you support the city staff with all the challenges that have gone on?
Well, if you get somebody new into a job, I mean, everybody had to learn how to mow a lawn somehow. So, if they screw it up, they screw it up. I mean, I went into inside sales, I've never done inside sales. I'm handling three territories that are the busiest in the whole company. I've made my errors, everybody makes errors, you gotta be humble. If you're not humble, you're just arrogant and you're gonna fail. Have a conversation. If I seen one of the city staff screw something up, I'd probably talk to Danny, if I, because he'd be probably their person, and I'd be like, hey, can you talk to so-and-so, they kinda messed this up? I'm not gonna go, I refuse to yell at people, it's not my job. I understand that you gotta do all this, see that, but realistically, that's a city employee, that's not the city council employee. Not my, it's not my job to be their boss. It might be my job to make a comment or notice that. But, last time I checked, I didn't sign the paychecks. I guess technically you do.
About four minutes left.
I talk too much. If I talk longer, you ask less questions.
Uh, how, how do you feel about the transportation options we have available in Montrose, and if you don't like them, what would you do to fix them?
I don't have a problem. Um, I know, yeah, like Trail Laser does come in. Uh, there probably could be some other options for, uh, the school bus options are not pretty right now anyways, but that's a Buffalo School District bus issue. Uh, it's a long bus ride. But for seniors and whatnot, I mean, if you do bring in senior homes, more of those options will be here. Because a lot of those places actually have their own. And then they can take the little trips over to Buffalo and uh, go to market and everything else, it'd be great. But yeah, I mean, overall, yeah, it's a car dependent town, unless you wanna walk or bike somewhere, and we have plenty of bikes in us. But I think it was car dependent, I moved out.
Uh, how would you get residents more involved with either volunteering the city or just with what's going on?
Uh, you have to, you have to talk to these people face-to-face. Actual conversations. Sending out a letter is not gonna get anything done. I mean, literally, I learned a lot from having this one event. The people that bought it and all, it's the ones I went to and talked to face-to-face. Human interaction is very important. You can post everything you want on your website or on your Facebook page, guess what? Ninety percent are gonna come back and say, I never saw it. There's people I see that say, didn't even know we had a watering bed. To this day. Even though it was up on the bank sign. You know, I mean, you can try to advertise all you want, but you don't get there unless you actually go door to door, I mean. Pretty sure I was spotted going door to door handing out flyers, Michelle probably was. Uh, to try and promote the fall festival. That was the most effective advertising we could do. Same thing for making relationships count. Go knock on the church's door. It may be that they don't wanna talk to you. In this case, there's not a lot you can do about it.
Okay, time for one more question, anybody have a final question they wanna add?
Okay.
Thanks for your time, guys. Uh, we're gonna do some more volunteer work.
Where they playing, Toby?
Uh, actually, what's sad is they're playing four minutes from my work. So I love my work to come here, they're in Newell.
Okay.
At the old arena we used to be at, for seven years. They just play a lot of this now.
Uh, do you wanna jump onto the next one or take a quick break? Anybody need to stretch your legs? Last one. Rocker?
I can go to the next slide.
That's why I asked.
I'll take the break.
Good move.
Uh, before we ask you any questions, or anything that you wanna say to start off with, or?
Thank you for the invite, appreciate it. Obviously, I'm in a rare fight company, lots of good people, so I, I'm glad to see this. So, thank you.
Uh, why do you wanna be on the city council?
Okay. Seventy-three years old, um, my aspiration in life is not being on the city council. Um, it's if I can contribute in any way to help, uh, Montrose be and grow in the right direction and, and be a better place to live for kids to grow up in. I'm happy. If I can contribute in that way, fantastic. I have spent a career, long career through lots of companies, worked in thirty-five countries, and my job has been problem solving. And that, that's what I've done for, for two years. So, if I can contribute, all, all the better.
Well, since I know where you stand on chickens from, I'm not gonna ask that question. Uh, but I am gonna ask you, what do you think is the biggest issue facing the city?
Boy, um. I'm gonna take a step back on that and ensure my personal wish list for Montrose. Uh, because I know what helps. Solve problems in the long run, and that is vision. And, let me just put a what-if on the table. Park Nickler wants to open up a Level Two Trauma Center within the next fifteen years. Twenty miles outside of Minneapolis, extending, coming out this direction. Where are they gonna do it? The logical place is the intersection of twelve and twelve. That's the logical place. Now, little bees and birds tell me, I'm in St. Paul's, wants to convert this twelve and twelve into a traffic circle. Which would be the exact opposite of what this city should do, in my opinion. So, if Park Nickler would even consider doing the trauma center out here, you got fifteen years to do it in, you got a lot of lifting between now and then, to be ready for something like that. Because you're gonna have to have top-flight water system, sewer system, and preferably, address it correctly, tap, you know, toilet to tap. Quality water, uh, sewage treatment. Now, we're looking at the issue of how do you possibly do that? I think you are in exactly the right direction. Expanding west, connecting with Waverly, distribute the cost for doing it right for this region. And come up with a fifteen, fifteen-year solution. You can't have a high school out here if you don't have the quality water. Two million dollar, uh, I'm sorry, million gallon water towers, twenty-four inch main between them. Toilet to tap, sewage treatment, and suddenly you've changed the entire climate, business climate and everything else, fifteen years out. You're not gonna get there in the next two, three, or five years, it's gonna take ten to fifteen. Frankly, it's gonna outlast me, I won't be around in fifteen years. So I like planting oats, okay? So, I think that you, the council has a tremendous opportunity for it. And that is, get a vision going, figure out how and what problems you're gonna be solving, and pass it on, and attract the right kind of council. And the right thinking to think longer term, so you can have the right stuff in the right place, the right time. With opportunities that aren't coming down the pipe. But I think that that is what's been holding Montrose back, frankly. It's too short-term, you gotta think longer term, think beyond your lifespan. What is, what are we doing for our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids? So.
I hope you're still around on the fifteen-year drive.
Yeah, I, you know. Who knows? But I, but I think that the town will be around. And so I think that whatever we do, I think we need to be thinking bigger than ourselves.
And one of the questions here on the application that says to explain what you consider the role of a responsibility of a council member? And your answer was, as an individual council member, work within the city council for fulfilling the council's role towards legally supervising administrative officers, regulating policies and exercise of city power.
Yes, that's, that's taken word to word right out of the Minnesota Manual on City Government.
Okay.
So, basically, they walk from this, the, the fine lines of what is the legal structure, moral structure, ethical structure for council, and then it's all legal reads, basically. Um, I, I think my number one answer was, show up for me, okay? Um, am I available? Yeah, I'm, I'm semi-retired, okay, I'm retired. So, what do you wanna call it? I'm writing a book, so hopefully, they publish the offer shortly. And uh, that might be a big difference in my life. Unfortunately, what has slowed me down is illness and death in my way. So, that's been very difficult. Hence, dragging you in here a little bit late, but I've been visiting banks and working on estate issues here, and it's been nuts. Um, but anyway, um, so as far as working with the council, working with a, a group, um, I think that. The problems that we have to solve are more than what this group can do individually. It's gotta be a team effort. And it's got to make sense in the long run, and that's why I'm so vision-focused. You gotta get, think bigger than yourself. And, and the lesson, if, if you don't mind, I'll drag you through the weeds here for a second. There was a time in my career, working for IBM, um, and we were negotiating a contract with NEC, the electric, in Japan. And, uh, talking about corporate mission and direction, and all that kinda stuff. And in IBM, it was patently obvious that everything in IBM was driven by the quarter. Because the stock price, and, you know, by the quarter. And everything in NEC, as the gentleman took me aside and explained to me, uh, a senior board member of NEC, is he goes. Here's the mission statement of NEC. It is written, to outlive anyone. Because it has to, because the company outlives everyone. Therefore, the mission statement for NEC was very long-term. Um, you know, I don't think anybody in America would come to it, I mean, it was so long. I, I do, but it made the point. That the council's job is, people are working day-to-day lives, making ends meet, they have kids to raise, they got, they got things they're working on day-to-day. Somebody's gotta be looking over the horizon. And that's where, it's a tough job, and I can appreciate it. Right? Did I answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Kind of bouncing off the visions.
Yeah. Where, where do you see Montrose in particular? If Montrose has a first-rate water sewer system, which, if you don't have the water, okay, I, even if we lose electricity, if you don't have water here then, right? So I mean, there's, there's something that's really fundamental for the city. So if we don't solve that problem right, then I think Montrose will go the way of the dodo bird. I know that Buffalo would love to think that they have all the answers in the world. And they have a bunch of them, but not all of them. I don't, I will ask myself this question, has Buffalo done anything for Montrose? Is there anything that he, that anybody can point out what Buffalo has done to help Montrose be successful? Now, I'll ask a tougher question, okay, Waverly. What has Waverly done for Montrose, and by, or vice versa? There's one thing that I, I see and I know firsthand, that Montrose and Waverly have connected together. The bank. I find it interesting that somebody has vision with the bank, to see this east-west connection. Okay? Whether it's, it's rock solid or, or something else, but, so what is Montrose? If Montrose is solving and looking westward in particular, but if Montrose is solving that, because Delano has a lot of stuff going toward it already, okay, great. Is it a good idea for Montrose to try to be Delano's bigger brother or little brother, or to try to balance with Waverly? The next ring out, right? And I think that that is worth focusing on. But it's your, your decision, you need to figure out where you go from here. Is that the answer? The general question, so yes. Good?
Uh, if you could change any city ordinance or zoning code, what would it be?
You know, I, I think, it was fascinating to go through this process about chickens, okay? And, and not that we live in it. It's, it reaches out to a more core fundamental issue. But folks, if the price of eggs, I, I sat down, never had an opportunity to publish the results, but I did an ROI analysis on backyard chickens. And it doesn't make economic sense until you almost trouble the price of eggs. Then it can start making sense. But being as a child raising chickens, what I know is, number one, it's a lot of work. It is not, yes, they're cute and they're fun for old kids, yeah, it's right. But after a year, it's a lot of work, especially seasonally. But number two is, is chickens stop laying after a couple of years. Then what are you gonna do with the old chickens? Old chickens are tougher meat, that's good for soup, but, so now it's who's slaughtering chickens in the middle of the city? In other words, have you thought this through, all the way, the life cycle of raising chicken business? It's a rough slog. Anybody who want, now, the one disappointment I had working on the zoning mission is the issue that not one person came to us and saying, I want chickens. Lots of talk about it, but nobody came to the meeting. We did two open sessions. Nobody came and say, I wanna do chickens. Because I wanted to ask them, what's your line? You know? But, but what really is the benefit here? And there's, there's a lot of downside. I mean, I, I went down to the, uh, the chicken feed store down there, right? And I sat down for about two hours with the lady running the chicken feed concession there and their business model. And understood how they make the money. But it, it doesn't make sense from the egg price standpoint. Now, if we, if we hit the point where egg prices trouble, people are starving to death and all this kinda thing, the world changes. But I don't think we're, we're not there for that. I think the average person, when they know the facts, will come to the conclusion that, you know, we're just not there yet.
So, you don't have any ordinances outside of chicken?
Offhand, I, I, I think that the city is doing pretty well. I think that the city did the right thing insofar as, uh, handling sidewalk, sidewalk construction costs to be more rather sitting, not the individual. I think that that's correct. And the reason why is the presence is already set. Because you have the handicap clause that applied for sidewalks that are way beyond an individual to be able to keep track of, much less afford. And, and the city's on the hook for it anyway, so. I think that for about twelve years, I was president of an A to A homeowner association in California, in San Diego, okay? Which, there wasn't a week that did not go by when I was last, okay? Um, because you can't keep everyone happy. So. But I think overall, that, um, we are blessed with, with a whole lot of homework. There's a lot of cookbook recipe way that the ordinances were put together. And we could figure about that. But the end result is, is I think it's pretty workable. I think that, that it's something we can live with for the most part. It's certainly not driving residents away. We're not confronted with a lot of issues, heavy lifting of cumbersome rules and regs. I think we're striking a good path meeting. So, no, I mean, I don't go look for, don't go look for work or issues that we don't have hidden a silver lining. Uh, you know, I think fifteen year vision, what does Park Nickle want? Or, or any business, okay? Just use that as a political test, right? What is Park Nickle gonna look for? They're gonna want to have a fire department to be here, solid, ready to go. And probably in fifteen years, we're gonna be at least quasi-volunteer, quasi-full-time. Okay? Um, it's just, you can just see the writing on the wall is coming. And part of that is because of the qualifications that you have to have as a firefighter nowadays. And the business model for firefighting is getting blended with emergency healthcare. Right? So the majority of calls have to do with health, not fire. And so you end up with a huge training and qualification curve that starts exceeding the, the small town ability to absorb that having volunteer status. That's really rough to do as a volunteer. I've done volunteering, okay? And that's rough to do when you are, are going to the school to keep your volunteer status, uh, being qualified for two months a year in your, your training. Holy cow, right? I think it's tough to do. So I, I think we're doing it as well as we can at the moment, a balance to a good balance.
Um, just looking over your application, you talked about, a lot about financial stuff.
Yeah.
So what is, um, how would you keep the city financially, friskily financially sound?
I'm a, I'm a newcomer to Minnesota. I grew up in Michigan and lived in North Dakota. We've moved twenty, well, twenty times, uh, in our life. Uh, you know, lived three years in Australia, I worked three years in China. I know a lot about other places in the world, not much about Minnesota. But Minnesota appears, I mean, you're wrong, I'm waiting for people to correct me on this, but Minnesota appears to be taking advantage of taxing the region, drawing it into St. Paul, and then doing it out with catches. Well, I'll give you back your tax money with hooks. We want you to do X, we want you to do Y, coming out of St. Paul. So we have an awful lot of directives coming out of the political structure that's not in Montrose. So, we have, uh, requirements coming at us along with any tax money that makes it finally back to us. And that taints our being able to keep town local and to be able to do the right thing, we think, with the people that we're living with in this town and community. I think that's tough. Now, what does that mean financially? It means we're walking in tightrope. It means that every decision made locally is being affected from St. Paul. And a little bit from Buffalo, right? Which is St. Paul on steroids, right? Sorry, I'm concerned. So, you're seeing the effect. I mean, we don't have to stand back very far to say, we could see what's coming to us or at us via the financial constraints that we face. So, I think it's the classic issue of we need to outsmart. And we need to be thinking longer term. Because if we can anticipate that, what are the few things we cannot afford to fail at? They are? Water? Sewer? Right? Keeping our noses clean as a community? I think, I think these are the things which the average homeowner wants in Montrose. Everything else, get the hell out of my way as much as you can. And that's why they move here. So, I think from, that's why I, I came out so strongly saying, if, if you can try to watch the mittles and dimes as well as you can, you can end up with a little bit of leeway out fifteen years. If we don't, we're gonna be so constrained moving on that, you know? And these economic times are really tough.
Yes, I know.
Okay.
All right, uh, please quick this sentence. A Montrose city council member should be?
Should be. I, ethical, honest, straightforward, straight-talking. I, willing to share what's undermined and willing to do the homework to be able to do it right. You know, I, opinions, I'm sorry, opinions are like assholes. Everybody's got them. What I'm interested in is facts. Thank you. So, I, I think, you know, council deserves nothing less.
How, how do you go about handling disagreements, whether it be personal, professional, or even a public?
If there aren't disagreements, then you aren't doing something. Okay? Um, I think anytime that I'm confronted in an environment where there's a disagreement, uh, the first thing I do is ask myself, you know, am I, is it here, am I stoned up? You know? Because if I'm coming from it from a factual, honestly considered, done my homework, and I can rationalize how I arrived and why my view of the world, I think is right, okay? Then it's an issue of, okay, can I explain this in such a way that the other, you know, is it a failure of the community? Can I explain this in such a way that the other person who may not have done the homework may actually become? And I have found, majority of the time, you end up with the strongest eye and the strongest advocate you could possibly ask for. You know, if you've done it all. Uh, most of the time disagreements turn into really strong, you know, advocacy and, and a win. Because that's, disagreement helps that happen. You know, helps communication happen.
If you were to receive a million dollar grant for the city and use it any way you wanted, what would you do?
Oh man. Number one, um, I would look strong at the balance sheet and what the debt is for the city. Because anytime you can reduce debt for the city, I think that's a great idea. Because interest rate is gonna take you to the grave. So, attack that first. Number two, turn it around. You have water and sewer system. And toilet to tap. I mean, you know, if, and I, I've worked for twelve years in FEMA, worked with hundreds of, of towns, ended up division supervised and responsible as a liaison between counties and lots of small towns and FEMA. So the federal to local, you know, interface. And I could, I, I have a notebook of, of every deployment I had in FEMA, each town, all that kinda stuff. I have notes in my garage. But over and over again, it came down to an issue of water system and sewer system. If the town, the towns do their homework and solve that, off the charts, they're ahead by, by miles. So, and it means a lot to the people in the long run. Quality of life is enormous to me. That's why I'm so passionate about it already.
What would you change about our downtown area?
I mean, I think the roads are great improvement. I think the one shortcoming, the one thing that we need to take a serious look at is really to advocate for underground utility. I, I think, you know, you want to have, um, better town, right? Underground utilities as much as you can, and get the electricity underground. I, I love the touches that we've been doing as far as the street signs and those kinds of things. It's good, it's aesthetic. Believe it or not, it's actually important because visitors coming to the town, what is the first thing they look for? It's a street sign, right? And so, um, you know, you have a cachet that sells your town, that's a good place to start. So, I think you're doing the right thing, you know?
Your last question's about three minutes.
Why would you say anything lasting that you'd like to leave us for?
Oh, oh boy. I mean, you have besides a bird? I'll plot the range. I believe that the times that we are facing, both as a nation, as well as how that ripples down to the state and to us, requires very careful consideration and thought. Gone are the good days. We can't afford mistakes. And we need to really not be driven by emotion. We need to be driven by careful, considered, patient thought of how to move forward. Because there's no room for error anymore. All the margins are gone. And I think that is an incredible challenge for you folks, okay? You wanted to be here, okay? So, okay, you can't dodge this bullet, all right? Um, I think that that's the biggest challenge with what we're facing. Okay?
Thanks Roger.
Yeah, thank you Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask it again, just anybody wants to take a break and stretch or anything? Well, uh, let's finish here and move on to the rest. All right. Thanks for coming here. Um, just before we start asking any questions, do you have anything that you just wanna say off the bat or?
Yeah, just, again, thank you for allowing me to, um, come before you guys and, and participate in this process. And, and I, I'm honored to be here to help, so I'm, I'm, I'm ready to serve and I'm ready to be part of this community. I, I, I would like to say too, I, I grew up in Waverly. I went to Howard Lake Waverly High School. And, um, so I've been, I've been a part of this community for a long time. And I, my, well, our house was right in town in Waverly. And my grandparents had a farm right on Clemente Avenue. So, I, um, you know, we'd walk or ride our bikes from Waverly to our farm in Montrose. And I think Montrose is a great town, Waverly's a great town. Um, we, with, with, I, I just wanna bring up the chicken thing here.
You're biased to the punch.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we had, we had forty acres on my grandparents' farm there. And we, we raised chickens every single year. And two cows. And, um, like, a few of them have said, chicken raising is not easy. And it has to be controlled because every single person in Montrose has a chicken coop. And there's, we, you know, we had a chicken coop, we'd raise a hundred chickens. But by the time they were ready to be butchered, the weasels would get on, they would pass each other the gap. They would, you know, you, you, there's the natural attrition of, of just having chickens. And you, you don't get eggs the first year. So what are you gonna do? For, you know, you buy little chicks, you gotta raise them to egg laying maturity. And you're buying all that feed for those chickens. And, you know, we would, we would have to go feed them every day, water them every day. And it is a lot of work. And then, after they're full grown, if, if, um, then, then the process of, if you're gonna butcher them, that's a huge process too. You know, what are you gonna do with them? Where are you gonna put the dead carcasses? So I think that's a really, really touchy subject. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of restricting people from growing their own food. Um, if that time would come where people would have to, would have to, uh, raise their own chickens or provide their own food. We've never experienced that in our life, but I know from my experience, my grandpa went through the depression. And they saved everything because they, they lacked. But our generation never lacked anything. So, you know, people, people don't even realize where their food comes from or how, how it gets to the table. And farming's not easy. It's, uh, just raising a garden, it's, it's a lot of work. We, um, you know, we have gardens like you wouldn't believe, just on Clemente there. And it's, it's, uh, I know they have community plots here too. And I, I don't participate in those because it's much easier to go to the grocery store and buy your food than, than raising it. I really like Untidings. You know, I, I worked for Untidings when I was in high school too. And, you know, that, they have it figured out. I don't know if you've ever visited their farm, but they have tunnels for growing food. And that's, I think that's what we need as a community to, if, if somehow- And that's, I think that's what we need as a community to, if somehow, I know Untied donates a lot of food to the community too, which is really beneficial for our, our community here. And, you know, if, if there was something that maybe the city could invest in some of the tunnel systems, it would be much easier than, you know, having a rotor tiller and everybody growing their own garden. Where we had community tunnels where, you know, maybe, maybe it's a little more of the barber system type of deal where, you know, everybody participates in and ensures the produce from the, from the community tunnel system. Because you're not, maybe you guys have a garden, but that's a lot of work too. You're down there digging and pulling away the weeds and weeds come up faster than we can hold. So I think that, my point is, is that I don't think people understand how to farm and how to raise chickens and how, what are the details. So it's a big, a bigger issue than just saying, yeah, go ahead and have chickens. That's my two cents on the chicken part of it. It's an interesting topic. That's why I mentioned it. Oh, and I, one more thing I have to comment is, because I, you know, I really, we moved back from the farm into town to Kelly's, Kelly's Old Store, where Grace Place is. But last night, my, you know, we, we like to travel also. My wife and I went out there and, you know, you reminisce about the fields that we used to walk and plant soybeans in. You know, Montrose has really developed that whole Cometa Street all the way down and these beautiful developments out there. And it's just amazing how, you know, as a kid, I would have never thought that there would be all those houses out there. But I think over the years, when we developed that, did a really good job of laying it out. Beautiful homes out there. I don't know what the future plans are, but I do know that a lot of people move out this way because it's, it's interesting. I was, Friday night was the end of the month at work. I worked at Bell Bank. And so I had to wrap up all the month end reports. And I was walking out at like six, six thirty at night. And this lady was behind me and I held the door for her. And she goes, yeah, just wrapping up the, for the end of the day, closing, shutting down shop. And I go, yeah, me too. So we just started chatting. And it ended up that she lives in Waverly through the thing. And she said that the reason they moved out here was because of the cheaper housing and, you know, it's really hard to afford a house in the city. So that's what I like about Montrose where, you know, it is that small town community and it is cheaper living. So we've, we've grown tremendously. I, I used to have a paper route in Waverly. And you'd go around and have to collect at that time. And you knew everybody in town. So that, I really liked that, that, you know, and I worked at Pete's Grocery. And, you know, you know, everybody, that's awesome that even in Montrose where it's just, you know, that, that community that has you now.
The other ones wouldn't have happened.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I just wanted to be part of the community and be involved. I've become more involved with it through Grace Place. And I, we're like pushing out the need for volunteering. You know, you get busy with life and you think you don't have the time to do stuff. But I think we need to make time for volunteering and really, it's really rewarding once you start doing it.
If you received a million dollar grant for the city, what, you could do anything with it? What would you do with it?
Yeah, I like that question because, you know, everybody dreams of winning the lottery. What would you do if you won the lottery? I, I'd like the idea of, I thought, I heard some of the answers. But what I, what I, I really liked Delano's Fourth of July, what they put on. Knowing if the city could somehow put on like, I don't know what it costs to get all those circus people there and the rides. And, you know, Delano draws a huge crowd when they put on that Fourth of July event. And they raise a lot of money with all the, I'm part of the gun club too. And I volunteered for their, and they get tremendous amount of people that come through there. So if the city could put on an event like the Fourth of July or that was, you know, a surplus is good too, you know, for, for infrastructure that needs repairs or, um, equipment that breaks down or, you know, just, Roger brought up a good point of not having debt, you know. If the city had a surplus, when needs do arise, the money is there. So a million dollars nowadays really doesn't go that far when there's big, big expenses like that. So I think you probably need to save a little bit of it and then maybe put on a little bit more events. Along those lines, the, the idea of transportation. I don't know, this just popped into my mind, but would there be a possibility of a city supplied taxi service? Where the city could supply a taxi service for the residents around here? Because I don't really know the lack, where, where people exactly want to go. Like a lot of people need to go to Buffalo. And if we had a surplus, maybe, maybe the city could have a land that people could rent or hire a retired person to drive people around. Maybe the city could have their own taxi system. One thing that I remember as a kid was Greyhound used to come through here all the time. And I don't know that they do anymore. They might, but I remember stopping at right up Highway 12 and picking up people. So maybe we could collaborate with, with some other bus services. But that was not, maybe the city could provide a taxi service for, for the community.
What is one thing you would like to accomplish if you became a city councilman?
Yeah, well, my, you know, my, my motto and my mission in life is to help people. Whether it's at work or wherever, you know, I'm always looking for, for people who need a, where I can be of value to people. So I, I want to be here to help. I don't know all the major problems, because there's always problems that come up. So I want to be part of the solution for, for the city of Montrose. You know, I, I, that's what I do all day long too, is problem solve. So in my job, if there's a problem, that's, my, my team comes to me. I have a, I had a team of eight who just laid out mortgage businesses. It's down over right now. I'll be banking business. We get an email like every week from my CEO that you guys can ask more people to join your bank, even more depositors. So just, just gathering the information, being part of, of the problems that do arise. I want to be more involved with the community.
Please complete this sentence. A Montrose city council member should be.
They should be open. They should be willing to at least listen to both sides. They should be fair. They should be honest. They should be, not have their own agendas. They should have the citizens and the city of Montrose in their best interest. You know, it's like any position of leadership. You have to, you have to at least listen and hear that, that side of the debate, both sides of the debate. And then when you gather all the facts, you make the best decision that hopefully benefits both parties.
If you could make one change or improvement in this city, what would you do?
You know, there's, well, there's two subjects that I thought about, the water and sewer system. I don't, I don't know a lot of the history on that. But I do know that people have come up to me and said, you know, hey, I saw you running for council. Are you going to solve this water problem? And I go, well, I'll look into it and see what we can do. There's, I think there, one of the suggestions was that we probably need to work with maybe other governments or at different levels, the county or the state level, to, to solve that. To, that appears to be the solution because it sounds like it's a pretty expensive proposition that the city might have. And I've noticed that, and people have brought that up too, that the inside of the toilet tank gets black. And I don't know exactly what that's from, but I, I've just noticed it over the years that we've been in Montrose. So we do have, we do filter our drinking water, but we don't have a whole in-house system. But the other, the other thing to answer your question, you know, the, the business part of it. You know, the, we have a, Highway 12, there's a tremendous amount of traffic that goes through there. Now I know the whole history behind the old high school on Acunda. But it's a big building and it's a big piece of land that would be ideal for a business or, you know, it's prime location, prime property. And my dad actually used to own a gas station right on the corner where Untied's stand is.
Who would you want?
Victor. It was way, way back. My grandpa owned a tire shop, like, you know, by the track.
Sorry, not on topic.
But, you know, overall, I think the project with the Southern Street looks amazing. It looks crazy in there. I like that new sidewalk they put in, way by the tracks. And I don't know what street that was, but when our grandkids come over, we walk to the park and it's nice to have that new sidewalk there.
So with, with this role, I mean, obviously, we're not always going to agree on things. And so how, how do you personally deal with disagreements that are, depending on those lines, whether it's personal, professional, and within a group of four or five?
Yeah, disagreements good. Yeah, if, if there's not disagreement. You know, every, everybody can tell the same group of people, like my team at work, the same exact instructions, and everybody interprets it differently. So I think the clearer that we can be on the goals, the clearer that we can be on our objectives, the concerns are all that, you know, that's how decisions are made, by researching, collecting all the data and finding the solution that, that, again, hopefully benefits the city and the residents more. And, you know, nobody's, usually doesn't agree a hundred percent. But, you know, if you have your demands and you're passionate about them, you get them out there, then you have to come to a decision. A decision has to be made at some point. So sometimes you might have to give a little bit here and give a little bit there. There are tough decisions that have to be made on a daily basis, not everybody's happy all the time.
So most of us know the other candidates here. So can you tell us any activities or special skills or anything that you could do or any involvement that you have with the city?
Yeah, I've just recently started becoming more involved in it with Grace Place. And I was, I was raised in a pretty strict church. So I kind of, in my twenties and thirties, got, got a little bit away from that. But I think spirituality is an important part of my life. And I never left that part of it, but I kind of left the church part of it. And we found Grace Place and we really enjoyed that, that church. So we've been going for some time now and becoming more involved with the volunteer part of it. So it's, it's, why not now? You know, that's, that's what I asked myself. If we need volunteers, we need people to step up and help. We need somebody, I'm somebody, I'm willing to step up and help now. And I'm at a point in my life where our kids are grown, we have five grandkids. And they take up a lot of time too. But I want to make time for, for volunteering and helping people. It's amazing what Grace Place is doing for the community with the food, food distributions and the community meals are, you know, I can think of a few of those. And we really, it's, it's really enjoyable to, to go there and help the people and interact with them. And we actually ran into, we were at Walmart yesterday and, I don't know, I think it's named as Gray Hill, was there. And one of his suggestions, which I really liked, was he would like to work together more with Grace Place and help raise funds through whatever, whatever ideas. His idea was bingo at our community meals. But the point is that I think we need to work more with other groups like, well, Celebrate Montrose, you know, the VFW was there, the fire department was there. You know, I think we can come together more as, instead of everybody doing their individual thing, that we work more together with, with other groups. And I don't know exactly how you divide those, those funds that are raised. But I know back to the Fourth of July and Delano, they have their formula or whatever. Ultimately, the three gets brought together and distributed. I've seen some of the numbers, they bring in huge amounts of donations.
So we, we have one or two meetings a month. Do you have any conflicts with making those meetings, council meetings or like liaison requirements?
I, I'm fortunate enough to have flexibility with my job. So I don't have any, like today, I was able to be really, it's not an issue. We have that flexibility where if there isn't being or, you know, I, I've wanted to join the fire department because when I lived in Excelsior for a while and I went and checked it out there. But that was one of the biggest problems was the time constraint, you know, that. When I worked at Pete's Grocery, I, I don't know if you know Jim Fransky, but I, I just kind of know few. Because he was at Pete's Grocery and Waverly Fire Department was really close, you know, he, the bell would ring and the sirens would go and he would take off running. And I thought, oh, man, that'd be kind of cool. So as far as time constraints for meetings, no, I don't have an issue. And I know a big part of this will be research. And, you know, there's a lot of time outside of just the meeting. And I do like researching. I do like, you know, trying to find a solution. I, if there's a problem that's brought before the council, I want to be knowledgeable on it. So I would have to do research outside of that. But I don't, I'm with that because I do enjoy that. And, you know, to, to come to the best decision, I would have to research it a little bit and analyze it. So, yeah, as far as time constraint, I don't see that as a problem.
Do you have any zoning codes or city ordinances that you think should be changed and why?
I've never been cited or never had any issues with cities, so I don't know exactly how the ordinances are, but I do, I do, you know, we have a city sidewalk right in front of our house, and I think that's fair, that I blow it off and don't have any problem with that. Or if the neighbors are gone, we mow their lawn or go up their driveway or help one another, I think that's part of, part of being a community too, is to help one another there. So I don't have any issues with any ordinances that the city has. I don't, you know, I obviously haven't read them all or know exactly what they are. You know, one of the, one of the things that comes to mind is I understand that if people can't pay their water bill, the city shuts off their water. Is that true? To a certain degree.
They usually try to order on a payment plan?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a last year's work, I think, last year's work, yeah. So, you know, I don't like to see people hurting because, you know, with whatever financial difficulty they have. Like someone mentioned, without water, people are pretty devastated. So I don't, I don't know if that's a city ordinance, if that's what happens. But I understand, you know, it's about the city's providing the service and having to be paid for somehow. So maybe with that million dollar money idea, that would pay for people's water bills to make it so that water...
Where do you see Montrose in fifty years?
Well, it's interesting how it's changed in the last fifty years. I do like the small-town community part of it, so I don't, I wouldn't really, you know, it's almost like Bell Mortgage Company I work for, as a small company, it's a totally different deal than when we go into a big company. And we've lost a lot of that small-company deal. So I'd like to see it stay as a small-town community for the, because there's a special feeling about a small town. And, you know, obviously, in America, it's always bigger and bigger and bigger and better. And, but there comes a point when you cross that line from small to big, where you just, you start losing certain aspects. When Bell was smaller, we were all on one level of a building, and we knew everyone on that building, but now we have buildings all over the place, and you hear people's names, and you go, who's that? You know, you don't even know them. We have a Christmas party every year, and it was really, when it was smaller, we would have a formal dinner, and you got to really meet everyone. And now we rent out the Shields Arena in Fargo, and there's five thousand people there, and you don't really get to interact with anyone at the Christmas party. So I think it's a real charm about a small city. And living in Excelsior, it was really, Excelsior's a really eccentric little town where you have that small-town feel, where they've grown, because they're closer to cities too. So I think in fifty years, I don't know, where we have big tall buildings and there seems to be a lot of apartment buildings going up all over. And, you know, we don't really have a lot of area to expand this way, but maybe if we start going up, I don't know. I'm not sure on that.
What, how would you get residents in town more involved with things that are going on, decisions that are happening, events, volunteering?
Yep, that's what I've, we've been trying to brainstorm on, and I think the answer is, is that we work with more, instead of the Boy Scouts trying to get volunteers to help them, instead of the Lions Club trying to get just volunteers for them. If we're collaborating more with all these other groups, you know, okay, so just for example, Grace Place is putting on an event, and VFW is helping. Well, all VFW has to do is to say that, you know, not only is Grace Place advertising for it and letting people know, but also the VFWs. So you're reaching a larger number of people if you're working together more with other groups. I think that might be a solution, or getting more volunteers and somehow working together.
Any time for one more question, if anyone has one? Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess.
You're down, or, yeah, what is that?
I think it's the table. Where the camera's still on, so I think it's the table, probably near the other table.
Like the middle table?
The middle table is, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's hot out.
Is it still hot out right now?
I don't know. I tried to film the air zone.
Hurry, there's a fan in here.
Yeah, in here, it's warm.
It's a bunch of fire on its face. Seven seventy-five, always gets hot in this room when you have a meeting. I'm gonna hold on to your table for it.
You know, it's great that I'm wearing very bright colors, like red, green, blue, orange.
Yeah.
No, it does.
Eighteen.
I'm just saying you guys don't have very bright colors today, and like, I'm just like, flirting.
Well, it's Monday.
You'd be fine. Oh, let me think.
Okay. Yeah, just initial thoughts.
Maybe jumping out.
I really like his thoroughness. I thought they were all pretty strong candidates.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think Roger has a lot going on right now.
It's a good bet.
It might be a little tough for him. When you talk about code enforcement, we need the council members to also reinforce going in codes. And Roger is, I know on video, but he doesn't follow a lot of the codes that we have, or a couple of codes. That's on Roy.
A lot of experience and a lot of history. I think that Toby also has some good experience being in Park and Rack. Either Roger or Roy would set back both of those commissions to need at least one, if not two, members. I don't think we could base our decision on that, but I think at this point, I would, I'd like either of those two. I think they'll vote, because both have had experience within the city on commissions. And of course, Toby's been the chair since they've gone through the Fall Festival this last weekend.
That's not him.
He cares a lot. I think he would be really good on the commission. Good thoughts?
I agree. I think he is very passionate. I did like the fact that he also won out of the four that said, he doesn't have an agenda. He's here for the city. He doesn't have that history, so therefore he's here just to work for the city. And sometimes that's kind of what's moving. You know, because they don't, they don't know anybody. They don't have any personal... So I think that's a good trait of somebody too. Like you said, with, everyone has to do, you know, a lot of work, you have to change a lot of things. And we shouldn't think about that, but it is still something we do have to consider.
Yeah, that, I think that would suck. I think that if he's the pick though, and he's the best fit, I'm not saying this, but if he's the best fit, I think you always take the best fit for what you want. I just find that a grab, I just... I think that, one, when Tom was around, we had somebody who had a lot of time to research and had free time that the rest of us who have to work every day don't, which leads me to Roger. And I get that our issue's there, but you've got the experience that he has, and he's worked with federal organizations and local governments and HOAs. He thought that was a good calling, an organization, the HOA, but...
I have to go back with one of the first questions you asked him. He, I mean, he was very honest, this was not something he had thought about ever doing. He was only here because he was asked, it's not because he was looking to do this.
That's a good point.
So he was only here because he had an invite, he wasn't here because he was asked.
Still showed up.
He did, he did.
I'm not gonna use that as a, that he didn't get asked, he still showed up.
Right.
But it's been applied and not showed up.
True.
He does have a lot going on, and that is tough. That is tough, but sometimes some people are too, some people aren't that great to... And we know, we know Roger, if he told himself, he'd damn near take him to the council. We know that from him. Other ones research and stuff that he's done and finding his own. I guess the same goes for Toby too, I mean, he got to handle a pretty difficult situation. He took it from the parts, and it's all kinds of hurdles, so he's really kind of hit solid with it. And gradually, like, as you said, he knocked back parts of that flood. And he took that long, he ran with it, and he's, you know, the Fall Festival, he was a pretty big success in my eyes. And he's been calling, he's been on there, calling and chairing it. It's kind of where I am, between those two, I think.
I remember the place that was advocate, and that one, a lot of that event was around with Christie. A lot of that was Christie.
So he was able to work with...
Work with city council, city staff, for sure, right.
I'm not, I'm not discrediting any of the work that he was did.
Right.
But he was still, he is still a chair of Park and Rack. I guess to narrow down the list, I haven't heard of a lot, so I'm just gonna assume, Roy is not one of the top ones that we're looking at, right? He's done a lot for the city, he's been around for a long time, serves in different roles, but we're just looking in a different direction, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that brings it to three.
We've talked a lot about city staff. Do you guys have any input? Well, not to put you on the spot, but, you know, this is your guys' decision. I, I'm more worried about hiring a clerk. I think any of those three I could work with, and it would be fun. What do you think?
I agree. So I'm gonna pivot. And one I'd like to see Aaron get involved in some sort of commission, not that that's necessarily a standard to have. And I think Roger does have a lot going on. Amy Park and Rack would be a good fit for Aaron to join on, and... When you're just weighing the positives and negatives, I...
I mean, hearing him talk, he was very passionate about events and community driven stuff, and that's the right spot for him to go. You know, to make those changes that are, I think, in my mind.
That'd be the better understanding of that, of events and stuff that parks can do, though.
I agree.
That's the confusion around at the park commission, so...
I like the idea of that. And the, all the stuff personally, and the code stuff that you brought up, does swing in a way. I think it might be a good distraction for Roger, but maybe a bit of a big step. Right now.
My concern with Toby is working with him this last year on parks. We've had to change them many times and dates, multiple times. Because of conflicts, whether it's coffee or baseball or work or whatever, we changed them dates like. Five times in a year. And being sports fans, you know, you know what it's like, you know, so you have to be committed.
They, they all technically said they'd be available, but I mean, all my things, different things come up for other reasons. Um, council meeting was going to change space.
Or not exactly, but I mean, that's just the issue. It's we've had to change because so many conflicts. Half of us, we're getting up against them. Park and Rec is even on now because we changed it so many times. I'm one of those people. I know, I, yeah.
To be fair, we did change to this time.
From, yeah.
So I mean, yeah, it's. I wouldn't compare it as a negative, I mean, it's ability to be flexible with all of us. I want them to say, go with your gut, not by the person, go with your gut feeling and who you think the best is. That's it. Your gut, all your gut. That's my opinion. I think most of you probably have that gut feeling after these four half hour interviews that you'd like to see. I, I think Toby deserves a shot. He's done well at Parkland. That's, that's my thought.
My thought is just going out of the norm and just going with somebody who. Who doesn't have a history, who doesn't have an agenda, who is just here for the city, helping the city grow. You know, doesn't have ties with. Well, I mean, it's, it's all about working together anyway, but, um. There's, there's no agenda. My, my suggestion is Aaron, just because there is no agenda there. He's just here to help, just here to help build the city and, you know, get more involved.
I can see cases for all three of them, um. And just, he definitely wants to help. And Toby and Roger, and they're obviously doing it already. I personally would like to see somebody coming from, or, 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 some of you that's kind of been there already. Had a little season, you know, called up. If one of the two.
Is that because there's only a year plus left or?
I can take one back, but I mean, that is, it doesn't take a while to speed on some stuff.
That was fifteen months?
Well, it doesn't really matter when you step in the council, always take time to catch up. There's always something going on.
I'm not, you don't know.
Right.
But I do feel both of them have been staying up to date at least monthly. I'm hoping going on Toby, I would do that. Presenting every month, but it's always been very active.
I don't care what the guy has got, hard decisions to make.
Isn't that a question on here?
Yes, it is. I've been asked to volunteer for my local town, and I'm like, nope, not yet. Not yet, yeah. Okay, uh, well then I'll, I'll move the discussion forwards and then I'll make questions on Thursday also. Yeah, I was kind of, I was reading Roger. I have to ask three times before we can have a session or the motion built on. And I think we can have discussion with motion on the board, correct?
Yeah, for the second.
For your second and my second. So I was giving to my second. I'll wait to see the rest. Also, okay, very, very discussion. Now, as I was saying, I was leaning towards Roger, but as you mentioned, he does have a lot of stuff. Partly is like, if he needs something, I can throw himself into it, but. I think I'm going to give him that time. And maybe right now is not his time for this. I don't know how I'm gonna sit here and I was.
Yeah.
He got a little emotional there, that was kind of.
Yeah, I've talked a lot. Been known to throw this on myself. So with that said. Second. That's where I was gonna end up anyways. So there was my discussion.
So the motion will separate.
And further discussion.
Like I said, my only other concern with Roger is we have, um. Codes that are in place that he doesn't follow. You know, it's really hard to be a council member, and when we put stuff out there. We put out there for a reason, and each one of these follow that stuff. We have to be the example.
Yep, and you know, things happen. We're human beings. Nobody's perfect.
But this is helpful for you to know that these violations that Roger have happened.
I agree.
My only other concern is parks. I mean, you guys disbanded that group a year ago. They got it strong. And right now the bylaws are at five, you're down to three. If we go that direction, so then what happens? You know, I know you don't want us to think about that, but we really need to think about that.
Same goes for planning.
Well, you're planning some time, I mean.
I agree with that, but. Time for a while, whatever that'd be. Six months?
For childcare?
Yeah, I mean, to, to find someone, I mean, we're not getting applications for either of them right now. The number of people in town that say that they love to do parking rack or planning zones, and then they don't ever. Exactly, I mean, donating your time is a lot to a lot of people. Is that still donating your time? But I thought the park board was gonna start cutting back on the meetings anyway. I thought there was not that. There was talk about it. I don't know exactly, I guess that's something we had to ask Christie, but I heard once the park trail plan was done.
That was Toby. Talking about it, he couldn't put up too much time.
And then started cutting back this.
But that just kind of shows too, it's a time commitment.
No, it is. All the boards are.
So right now. Yep, and right now, we have to figure out where we're at with parks and the events and what we can do. But if we start, you know, eliminating meetings, we're never gonna figure that back out again. I'll be right back when we're, when we have the two days left.
As far as the events, have those, have we asked them?
They're working on it. Um, if it's not done before, meeting next week, it'll be done by November. I just talked to new Sam today, Sam.
I, I would just be careful, you know, because you're saying because they're on the park board, you don't want to allow them to run the council because they're on the park board. A lot of people get their foot in the door by going on the boards. To say you don't want them on the council now because he's going on the same on the park board is.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it's the commitment that would hinder for the park board. Council's way more of a commitment.
It is. But you have two commission members running here.
That's why I just personally think that we should just take somebody who has, has no agenda, has no. You know, they're just here to help the city grow. It's adding an extra person. You know, it's gonna benefit the city and keep the attitude still where they're very strongly even. And have to like that.
Why can't we encourage the non-commission member to, to join those? And like, I didn't think, I think it was David that had said it too, like, especially with wanting the events and the community involvement. Especially the parking rack. Is there other discussion regarding Toby joining the city?
Motion for the floor?
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Okay, uh, all vote by Mizato.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Paradise, uh, Mr. Soler, uh, motion passes three, uh, three, one, sorry. Uh, Michael?
Michael, I just have a question. Who's gonna reach out to Toby? We kind of should have said that, how the next pass is gonna be.
Uh. Kind of like we did the last time. I can reach out to all four of them. That's, they've had me called for the last time and say.
That, coming to America.
Yeah, or no.
And then said he would need a meeting on Monday, this morning, and that was it? I have enough on my plate.
I think all of their numbers were on there.
Yep, all their phone numbers, no emails, but yes, phone numbers.
Yeah, so I can, I can give them all.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Michael?
Um, Councilmember Auto reached out to me last week, something like that. Um, to see if there was any other options since, since I reached out that when Michael needed help, um. Kind of the same options, you can borrow a class from my different town, you can kind of hire a city administrator that might not have court experience, um. Nothing, yeah, nothing. But hiring or borrowing.
I think the other one is you taking on that, because somebody has to have referred credit to that, I believe.
Well, we'll hopefully have that too. Um, yeah, when we're interviewing, but, uh. So borrowing a class from another child would be borrowing, and Michael would come back and help us temporarily in part time, very hard time capacity. Just through the month of October probably, um, that is kind of our only rate, just to help us get through some of the. Stuff that we don't know how to do. It's cheaper than using Advil, for sure. Um, it's. Better having that one-on-one interaction, um, because usually it's scanning or talking to Advil on the phone, and it gets kind of cumbersome doing that. Michael has, uh, showed Christine and I how to do some things, just not everything, um. And that help would be very much appreciated by staff for the next month.
And I feel like if it's beneficial, we could at least extend past the month, once we get this new person in.
Right, to help that person.
At the end of the year would be great.
As needed, yeah.
You know, so I don't wanna just say for a month.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up again in November to see where we were at and who we hired and what, what that. What kind of needs that person would have as far as getting on boarded, and it might just be, this is where I keep me, this is where I keep that.
Yeah, this is our general processes.
Yeah, and it might not be much help at all, but at least have that option open would be good.
It was nice to see too, we had quite a few people applying that have that exact role experience.
Yes, so hopefully we will get one of those people that have the exact experience, so that mostly what need is just sort of. This is how we do this, this is where we keep this, just some onboarding in general.
As, as a temporary band-aid, I think it would be a good idea to have him come around and do some of that stuff, so that you don't have to do it. Because you don't have the time to do that.
Well, and I'll be filling in some of it and, and helping out where I can, but obviously Christine and I both have jobs to do as well, so. It's gonna be pretty tight.
Yeah, I, I know what you. Okay, um, I'll make a motion to approve Michael, Michael Sommerfeld to assist city staff with. Employee transition in part-time temporary as needed capacity at his current hourly rate.
Excellent.
Further discussion?
Did you want to do that on the, want to do the other even?
I think, yeah, through, through, uh.
Go through him here or?
I would say it's there for the end of the year, whether we use it or not, and then we can, we can look at first year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's true.
It's December thirty first. Okay, uh, all vote on yours, I, Mr. Paradise?
I.
Is out.
I.
Motion passes four, zero. Uh, new computers, Colin quote.
Here, council, including the packet receiving was, uh, our latest quote from Colin regarding, uh, computers that council member Solar is on. That's to look into as far as like the I, I seven series, uh, there's a couple of different options. Colin said if we're going with the I seven to do the five-year warranty at the, the top price, that one thousand four hundred ninety-six dollar for five sets each. So we for two computers, and that would be coming out of our money. Are they better than the ones I have? Those clearly function.
Definitely a lot better. I'm sure we don't need something more high-class than this. Well, you're gonna be satisfied with the deals.
Yes, this is definitely satisfied.
Oh, and me to that. You want to perol for that now?
Yeah, just, yeah.
You said that's the Argo funds?
Yep, we come out of Argo funds, um, for two computers at the five-year warranty.
I will make a motion for two new computers. I think five years, one, two, three, nine, six, four, five, two. First of all, reminding drunk on computer.
I will say.
Further discussion? What do you do with the old ones?
They take them and destroy them. They recycle them.
How do they destroy them?
They wipe the, um. The computer stuff.
I was looking for something more entertaining, so.
Yeah, all right.
Real hot fire. They take them down with the right money, share it with the government.
I think they just.
Put a couple of little prompts.
Uh, they wipe them and then recycle, uh, plastic.
Any other discussion? Ms. Otto?
Hi.
I, Solars?
I.
Paradise? Motion passes four, zero.
Who was the second?
I was David.
Uh, twenty twenty-four Chevy dump truck quote. Mayor Council, in the packets, a quote for eight twenty twenty-four Chevy one ton pot cab dump truck. Um, this was budgeted for, under the capital, general capital projects fund, four oh one, um, a hundred thousand dollars was allocated for this truck this year to replace that flatbed GM, I think that's a Chevy, out there, old thing. Um, kind of pouncing on this thing because as you know, auto strike's looming on very many of these lots. Um, and the price is in here for a total of, so this is already, usually you have to buy these separate and then get the box put on, this is already ready to rock and roll. We do, yes, we do have to pay, it's in here, we do have to pay sales tax at the city office, so. So I'm looking for approval of eighty thousand, five oh nine eighty-four of that possible hundred thousand dollar motor vehicle budget. I was set aside for two, replace this truck.
Yeah, I, especially with reunion stuff going on with the auto workers, it's gonna go up. So this same truck probably gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars next year.
Yeah, it's really hard for, trying to get one done all the time. Trucks, these things, yeah, it's kind of amazing.
Just so you guys know, the little trucks, it's more like, more park work, we can't drive our big haul trucks into the park and dump like wood chips in, because you'll be leaving ruts the size of these tables. So these smaller dump trucks are in need, and we haven't had one in years, but with that flatbed we got, it's just a flatbed. So I've had the comments like, why do we have to sit here and shovel this off? But if we had a little dump, we can just dump it in and move on. So hopefully this saves a little bit more time on some park work we gotta do too. So I'm looking for a motion to approve to buy this pickup.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase, so the twenty twenty-four Chevrolet dump truck from Solars Motor Company, sort of, in total amount of eighty thousand, five oh nine eighty-four. One second. Any other discussion? More discussion? Solars?
I.
Mr. Paradise?
I.
Ms. Otto?
Hi.
I'll vote I, motion passes four, zero, half-ton Chevy quote.
His quote, I, I think I handed off to you guys. A few days after I found this truck, this, I told them what I was looking for, the plan was to replace these two trucks this year. This money would come out of, um, the water fund, sanitary fund, the wastewater plant fund, the general fund, and the park and rec fund. These trucks get allocated through those funds. I know they're gonna go to a different plan moving on in the future, but this money's in these funds to replace this pickup. It's actually my pickup we're gonna give it place, but we're gonna jack some things around. I'm gonna give this to the wastewater guys, I don't wanna take one of those other trucks, because I'm that nice of a guy. They use, they need the truck more than, you know, I, I don't need to hold the tools like they do anymore, right? I gotta hold the pencil. So it would be ten thousand out of each one of those funds I said, and it's allocated, it's budgeted for, it's in the sheet. I'm actually not asking for money that we don't have. For the first.
Wait, wait, what day is it?
I'm not guaranteeing this truck will be there, you would not hold this truck. So, and they go that fast. So you're looking at a twenty twenty-four half-ton plain D rig, if you have long box, roll, grab pickup.
You just want maybe up to fifty thousand, so then you can find something else that this one.
Yes, uh, an umbrella would be great on that case this one is sold.
That would be great. Cause that, there should be fifty thousand so.
That's correct. I named out five of councils, ten in each one of those council quarters. I can rename them if you want them.
No, I don't remember going through it.
Yeah. So I guess I, it's a great idea, give me an umbrella, I guess, to spend the money to replace a truck out of the fund. I hope it's there.
Okay, um, so I will make a motion uh, to allow Dan to spend it to fifty thousand dollars on a replacement truck. Way for our treatment.
Then sanitary, then water, then general, then park and rec, it's, yeah. It's a multi-use vehicle.
One second. Further discussion? I'll vote I, Ms. Otto?
I.
Mr. Solars?
I.
Paradise?
I.
Motion passes four, zero.
Mayor Council, last thing that I have for you guys in here is a quote for concrete work, for park fences that the park board would like to see installed. Um, this quote is from Jordan Concrete, who we've been using for the last, I mean, forever, to do these little patch jobs, you know? Um, these benches were kind of brought to my attention by the park board to, that, that they would like to see swapped out with the ones we're getting donated by the, the macro lines. Um, a few of them I will have to give placards for. Um, I don't wanna rip a placard bench out or a dedicated bench out without replacing with a dedication plaque. So this is specifically just for the concrete work, and it would, uh, most likely come out of the park fund, which is money there, um, other than buildings.
And how many pads?
I believe it's total of six. Six benches they're willing to donate, six pads in some way, shape, or form, either have to be yanked and pulled and reed, or, or some other work needs to be done. I did not go with, uh, L. Jordan on this bed, spoke with it, but I think it's probably the replacement of most of the pads. Um, it looks like they're gonna pour a little padwork garbage can on the side of one of these, so, also other little things, so.
There's four benches that, um, are gonna be used with the parks, so it's straight concrete. Two over this, four over that.
I believe those are in here, correct? Yep. And the rest will be replacing the one on the corner with twelve, I believe, and there's one. Yeah, there's, uh, one of Pleasant Hills. Yeah, it's what the park board asked. Looking for your approval on seventy-four hundred to, uh, L. Jordan Concrete to continue with these so we can install the benches.
I'm looking more to approve seventy hundred dollars for concrete for the benches.
Second. Further discussion? I'll vote I, Ms. Otto?
Hi.
Mr. Paradise?
I.
Mr. Solars?
I.
Motion passes four, zero.
Like a motion for adjournment?
Second. I'll answer.
I.
Okay.